Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for April 4th. Note that we do have a quorum and we have a whopping two things on the agenda. The first being approval of minutes, the Licensing Board's regular meeting minutes for March 21st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we have our agenda for consideration. Number two, Class B Beer, six-month, West Bend Athletic Association Dock Gantry Complex, 2,000, or sorry, 2,500, Country Creek Circle for April 19th, 2021 through October 19th, 2021. That sounds wrong.
Twenty-two.
Yeah. They should say twenty-two. There we go. Okay, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second with that correction. All those in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're just going to take a brief pause before we call the common council to order, just in case there's any other guests that want to arrive here by 6:30. And good evening once again. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for April 4th. Note that we do have a quorum with Alderman Kaler absent excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have 11 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council's regular meeting minutes for March 21st.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve.
You want to second it? I heard you both at the same time.
Oh, sorry, second. Yeah.
All right. Alan and Model, any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we're going to have two presentations here. The first one is going to be the National Telecommunicators Week Proclamation. I'll read that, then we'll pass it on to our chief, who after which will take over to deliver, to announce the deliverance of the oath of office for our new lieutenant of police. So first I'll ask for a motion for that proclamation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Burke, Wiss, and Model, all those in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this so reads, "Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas by monitoring police and fire activities by radio and providing them with vital information, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link, link for our police officers and firefighters ensuring their safety. And whereas the work of these unseen first responders is invaluable and should be applauded and held in the highest regard all through the year, for without their commitment, devotion to hard work, countless number of lives and property would be in jeopardy. Now therefore I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the great city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through 16th, 2022, as National Telecommunicators Week, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the men and women whose service and dedication keep our community and citizens safe." Take it away, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be very conscious of your time. I know you're very busy, but I would like to speak very briefly on the wonderful nine employees that we have working for the police department now and the many, many who came before them. Single most vital link to safety of our community, I believe the mayor read. I can't speak to that enough. Last year, 2021, we handled over 66,000 either calls for service or officer-initiated activity, the vast majority of which of those involved communication with our dispatch center. Our citizens call our dispatch center for police services, as I've spoken to in front of you before. They also call for what times my trash going to be picked up? When is the parade? When is the library open? And our dispatch takes that role of service to our community very seriously, very seriously. They're that contact point. Our officers appreciate them more than we say, and we're going to change that, but they protect us. They give us information. Former dispatcher Casey Miller up on the dais, they get information to allow us to be safe and efficient in our police services, in our service to the community, in our protection of the community. They are truly the unsung heroes of our police department and they are the most vital link to us providing the service we do. So I thank them. Guess I'll continue on. John? Thank you. Again, I appreciate your time. Normally we sworn our officers in front of the council, and the next time you see them is maybe 25 years into their service, maybe, if they elected to come in front of the council and had the accommodation read. Most times they go through their entire career just living that quiet life of service. We're going to start a new tradition tonight of introducing our promoted employees as well. It's very important. They've taken that first, very large step by becoming police officers, and they continue in that service to our community. You don't have to leave. That's music to our ears. They take that next step to providing service. So tonight we're here to have the oath of office administered to very newly promoted, as of about a half hour ago, very soon, Lieutenant Thomas Lichtensteiger.
You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas G. Lichtensteiger.
I, Thomas G. Lichtensteiger.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As lieutenant.
As lieutenant.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Self-help.
So I will let Tom speak in a minute, but for all of us that know Tom, once we hand the mic over, we got about a 20-minute presentation. Tom joined our police department in 2011, but what's interesting is that's when he officially became a police officer. He was actually a police explorer, starting in 2004. That's his daughter out there. Sad that she can't join in. You should bring her in. Joined as a cadet or an explorer, spent almost as much time as an explorer as he did as a police officer, which you find really shows his dedication to our career, to our service, and to our community. So thank you for that, Tom. Was promoted in 2019 to detective, and as soon as he was eligible, be put in to take that next step to lieutenant. So we're extremely happy. He's an informal leader in our department, and we're all excited to have him make that leap to formal leaders. Tommy, congratulations. Stealing some of the fire department's thunder, we watched as they had family pin on the badge and how much that meant. Our philosophy, of course, is that the family is the main support piece. They have a family here at the PD, and they certainly have the family at home. They have a family that sacrifices, misses out on birthday parties, sleep, those things to help Tom serve his community. And we also ask that you keep him grounded, that you make sure he maintains his ability to be a full human being, not just a police officer, but a good human being. Tommy, would you introduce your family?
So yeah, the louder out there is the younger Sophia. This is my daughter Charlotte and my wife Amber. Charlotte, how old are you? Three. So it's going to take some commitment from everybody. I'm going to be going to third shift, so that'll be exciting. But I appreciate my wife has been very supportive in my career so far, so it'll be fun to see the rest.
Thank you. Congratulations, Tommy.
Congratulations, Tom.
Congrats again to our new lieutenant. And with that wonderful news, I will recess the Common Council to Public Works.
Okay, I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one is approval of minutes from our regular meeting, March 21st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or deletions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award C-22-03, water utility pavement repairs at various locations.
Good evening, Max. Good evening. Thank you. This item is to award the annual contract that the water utility puts together for pavement repairs at various locations during the year. We have water main breaks in the main lines and on laterals, and the water utility crews go and repair those. And after the repair is done, the backfill, but we need to hire a contractor to complete the pavement patching. So this is a contract that we put together every year, and we bid the contracts and we received the bids on March 25th. Four bids were received, which are listed in your memo. We reviewed the low bid and found that the bid prices were very similar to the contract we had last year. There were a little slight increase in some of the concrete items. However, everything else looked good. So the final contract amount will be dependent on how many water main breaks and how many repairs are needed. We reviewed the low bid and the qualifications of TP Concrete Services LLC, the low bidder. Based on previous work done for the city, we find that they are capable of performing the work, and we recommend that contract 2203, in the amount of $107,737.50, be awarded to TP Concrete Services LLC. And also, we recommend a contingency fund of $16,160.63, which is the 15% maximum allowed by the state statutes. We're asking for this maximum because we do not know how many breaks will need to be repaired throughout the year. If the board and council approve, we have an award of contract attached.
Motion approved.
Second.
Are there any questions for Max? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award C-22-06, epoxy pavement markings on Paradise Drive. Max?
Thank you again. This item is for replacing fading epoxy pavement markings. We use epoxy painting on our main roads such as Paradise Drive, Washington Street, Main Street, River Road, those other roads with the higher volumes of traffic. And every year we put out a contract to refresh those pavement markings. This contract will have pavement markings along Paradise Drive, and we will have a small section along River Road as well, because last year and the year before, we were doing work in a certain section of River Road by Tif 14, by railway, and that section we could not paint because the contractor had work to do in the road. So we will address that section in the same contract. We received two bids on March 25th, and they are listed in the memo. We reviewed the bids as well as the qualifications of Brick Line Incorporated, the low bidder. Based on previous work done for the city, we find them capable of performing the work, and we recommend that the board award the contract 2206 in the amount of $67,142 to Brick Line Inc., and also a contingency fund of $3,858, approximately 5.7% of the total bid, for a total allocation not to exceed $71,000 for this project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Max?
I'll take one.
Alderman Burke.
Max, I got a call from a constituent who was talking about some of the markings associated with Paradise Drive, but maybe up Silverbrook a little bit, you know, because that's a pretty busy intersection. Does this, although we designate this as Paradise Drive, does that include some of those areas that are just off of Paradise Drive?
So this contract will be only on Paradise Drive. It may overlap in cross streets. However, we do have the contract for the latex pavement markings, which is the next contract that I will talk about, and that contract will take care of these other streets, the cross streets and other streets in the city.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, award C-22-07, latex pavement markings at various locations. Max?
Thank you again. This item is for latex pavement marking replacement throughout the entire city. So we would apply these pavement markings to all the other streets outside of the streets where we usually do epoxy pavement markings. We received the bid for contract 2207 on March 25th, and only one bid was received. This is not surprising. Over the years, Crowley Construction was consistent in submitting bids. There were some years where we had a second bidder, and that was guideline. However, this year again, we have one bid for Crowley Construction, and we reviewed their bid and we reviewed their qualifications. Obviously, based on work done for the city in the past, we find that they can address this contract. So we would recommend that the board award contract 2207 in the amount of $181,455 to Crowley Construction, as well as establishing a contingency fund of $9,545 for a total location not to exceed $191,000 for this project. The bid of Crowley Construction was higher than our estimate. We found that the cost of paint has gone up. I talked to Crowley Construction. I looked at the unit prices in their bid. Last time we had them, here was probably four or five years ago, and two years ago, we had no bids on this contract because contractors were shy of getting the entire city done. However, they had promised us that they would bid the following year. And the following year, which was last year, they did not bid on this job because there was a shortened, a shortage of paint, and they decided to prioritize certain projects such as airport and bigger projects like that, and so they did not bid on our contract last year. This year, they have enough paint and they'll be able to do our contract, and so we would recommend awarding this contract to do the entire city with pavement markings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Model?
I just wanted to understand. I did, I did see on this recommendation that we didn't have real specific as to where this was going to be done, like you're, like you were talking about, Brett. And I have gotten, and I called, I called Max, and it does not include the areas that I would like to see some new latex, but like this says, it's redoing old stuff. So Max did indicate that he's willing to at least entertain the idea of getting some parking lines painted on North, North Main Street.
Yes, so that's a discussion we'll have with the chief of police and the director of public works. This contract is to replace pavement markings that are in our inventory, not to create new pavement markings in various areas. But if we have requests to place new pavement markings, we definitely reconsider them and then discuss them. So again, this is for all the pavement markings that are in our database, for all the streets in the city, center line, crosswalks, stop bars, et cetera.
Thank you, Max.
Alderman Kennedy?
Yeah, I just, I know you said it's only what's in inventory. I know that this year I met with the Traffic Safety Committee about Villa Park and changing some parking, and they came to the conclusion of painting a yellow line on that. Is that included in this, or is that a new request that I need to work with you on?
No, that line is included in this contract because it passed through Safety Commission and Council prior to us bidding this contract, so that, those markings were including, included in the database that we bid out.
Thank you.
Alderman Allen?
Yeah, Max, to go back to something Alderman Burke was just brought up on the epoxy markings on Silverbrook, are you going to start looking at some of these streets that weren't previously high-traffic? I mean, basically, QuickTrip has generated enough traffic that on Silver, the Silverbrook and Paradise intersection, there's almost, you know, there's only a suggestion that there's lane markings left that pretty much been obliterated. Now, that may be simply because it's been about four or five years, but these are, we're now, we now have a couple of new high-traffic intersections that it might be worth looking at transitioning to epoxy.
Yes, so we have looked at this area. There are pavement markings from Paradise to Silverbrook up to QuickTrip. When the QuickTrip came in, they had to look at the queuing of vehicles traveling north on Silverbrook Drive and trying to turn into their, their site, and they had to adjust the storage of vehicles at the left-turn lane there, so they had to expand that left-turn lane. So we have not switched from latex to epoxy on, in this area. That is something that we could look at. The one thing with epoxy is that it's more expensive, but it lasts a little longer. The latex we're planning on doing every year or every other year, and so we could, we could switch it to epoxy. We'll definitely look into that, for that area specifically.
Thank you.
Yes. Alderman, go ahead.
Just wondering if the State Highway Department chips in at all for like Highway 33 or those kinds of roads?
No. So Highway 33, we have, the city has an agreement with the Department of Transportation, and it describes some maintenance tasks that the city has to do, and the repainting on the lane is one of them. We also have authority to weigh into driveway locations, driveway permitting, access from that road. There's a section of the responsibility slash maintenance on the county with snow removal. So we do have an agreement that specifies what we're, the city needs to do, and in that agreement, I believe there's compensation from the state to the city on a yearly basis with the transportation aid, et cetera.
Are there any other questions? There aren't any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Max. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
And with that, I will call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. We only have two things on the agenda. First up is the approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting, March 21st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is the agenda items for consideration. We have the resolution authorizing the transfer of general fund balance per the developer's agreement. This is the same agreement that we approved last meeting. This is just going to be the formal resolution for that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any questions on that? All those in fa, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, you can keep me honest with what I'm reporting here today, so. On the status of a grant opportunity through the federal government, the FEMA organization, this grant is for funding directly to fire departments to help increase or maintain the number of trained frontline firefighters available to their communities. Known as a SAFER grant, that's short for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, the grant was written seeking funds to provide for nine additional firefighters at a cost of about $3 million for a period of three years. After that time, the city would be responsible for continuing the funding. The application was completed and submitted on time, which was in itself no small task, given the short application window. The notification of the award should come sometime in September of this year. If we are successful and are awarded the grant, it is believed that these firefighters could be onboard by the beginning of next year, January of 2023. These new firefighters will help in reaching the goal of having a four-person engine company and a dedicated two-person ambulance crew in each fire station. Talk of personnel led to a discussion on recruiting and retention, recognizing the fact that we are competing with many communities and departments to fill vacancies. Many of these communities are in close proximity to training academies and schools that are producing the potential candidates, giving them advantage in securing their employment. Discussion also included facility requirements, not only for accommodating the additional staff, but also for maintaining existing stations or building new ones. Our fire stations have been around for some time, and trust me, are not aging gracefully. Heating and cooling equipment is failing and is difficult to repair, not to mention the costs associated with fixing old and outdated equipment. There is, okay, then there is the topic of station locations. Past studies have shown differences in city growth. Some say we're growing to the east, some say west. What is known is that is with growth comes the increased need for services. That's why this committee was formed in the first place. Other items identified by the analysis study that was given to us were the community risk assessment, a study of response times, fire prevention staffing, EMS cost analysis and fee structure, and department training. It is evident by the study details and the committee member comments that there are some important decisions to be made concerning the fire department both now and in the future. The next meeting is scheduled for April 12th, where we will be touring facilities and making a checklist of possible capital improvement needs.
Thank you, Alderman Burke, for that very detailed report. I'll add on that we should be seeing a update to that fee schedule that was mentioned from the chief in the next month here or two. But I'll open up, is there any questions for Alderman Burke?
Outstanding.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Then we'll continue with reports to number nine, a report by Alderman Burke again regarding the library board.
Oh my goodness.
Sorry.
That's okay. Cool. The last meeting of the library board was held on March 15th. After the pledge of allegiance and approval of the agenda, the public comments section was moved forward to accommodate guests who were present at the time. Comments were given by local residents concerned about a decision that was made to not display a mural at the library. Following their comments, we resumed the business of the board. Financial reports were given. The library director explained his reports, which included the SWOT analysis, that's S-W-O-T, not SWAT, which is short for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. This is part of the library's strategic planning process and focuses on things such as staff confidence, customer service, facility layout, programming options, and expanding partnerships, just to name a few. Part of the strategic planning also includes weeding the collection of non-circulating material and out-of-date items, and also determining the needs of the community. Steve, the library director, advised that the Friends Group is growing and advised us of some fundraising events coming up, such as the book sale. Staff attended the TLA conference in Portland, Oregon recently, looking for new programming ideas. The board president reported the need to approve the bond or insurance policy covering our financial secretary. Agenda items included review of several policies concerning the collection and equipment policy, the art exhibition program policy, and the display policy. One thing can be said about the new library director, his review of existing policies found the need to clarify and simplify our policies and make them easier to understand and follow. The board also approved an equipment request for electronic improvements in the storeroom. It's outdated and needed to be corrected. The next meeting of the library board will be April 19th.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. Alderman Allen.
Yeah, quick question. Could you go, what was the deal with the mural? Was it proposed to be displayed and people didn't want it, or people wanted it and the library said no? What's?
There was some inconsistencies with the decision to display it in the first place. I guess the information wasn't totally communicated, and the library director made a decision that it didn't fit in some of the programming that we have. So it was determined that he would just, that it would not be allowed to be presented. Again, with every instance, there are two sides to the story, and again, it was a decision of the library director not to put the mural up.
Any other questions for Alderman Burke? Then, number 10 is a report by Alderman Kayle regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting. He is not here, so we'll wait to hear if he has anything else. I do know that the design for the All Abilities Playground was presented, so feel free to check that out. Then we'll open up for announcements. I'll start off with tomorrow is election day, so don't forget to vote. Best of luck to our District 5 aldermanic candidates, and of course, those of the school board, county board, and the judge race. Any other announcements for the good of the order? Yes, sir?
There was a time you could make a joke about vote early and vote often, but there'd be a big investigation, so I won't say that. A reminder, because of election, the plan commission for tomorrow night will be on Wednesday night instead, and it will hopefully get out by midnight.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we do have new polling locations, so make sure you check that, right? District 5 is at the VFW Hall, District 8, right? Masonic Lodge. Masonic Lodge, absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? Yes, sir?
Just wanted to let anybody that's interested know, the bid board will be meeting, not here because they'll be voting, but at the library in the boardroom. So.
Wonderful.
That'll be tomorrow morning at early, 7:30.
You can get that in, and then you can go vote, it'll be great. Any other announcements? Then, having none for the good of the order, I'll adjourn by the call to chair. Have a great night.